Good evening and welcome to the Abington Board of Selectmen meeting, March 24, 2014. Would you kindly stand and join us in slitting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under public announcements, I have a note from Sharon White, the Board of Health, would like if you would please make an announcement at the next Selectmen's meeting that the Health Department needs volunteers for the Compost Site at 171 Groveland Street during the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. on Saturdays from May through November. Please call the Health Department at (781) 982-2119 if you are interested. Mr. Coyle, you have an announcement?
I have an announcement from Tom Moderator, Sean Riley. This announcement gets made every 10 years, so I guess I am lucky to be the one to say it, but the Charter for the Town of Abington requires that a Charter Review Committee be established this year for the purpose of reviewing and drafting proposed amendments to our town charter, which may be deemed necessary or desirable for a more efficient future operation of our town's government. The Town Moderator is required to appoint five resident volunteers to serve on this Charter Review Committee, and the committee will be asked to submit a list of recommended Charter Amendments to our annual town meeting in the spring of 2015. If you are interested in volunteering for the Charter Review Committee, please contact Tom Moderator Sean Riley at (781) 878-2568, or by calling the Town Manager's Office at (781) 982-2100. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other of my colleagues have had announcements? If not, at 6:30 p.m. we have Jill Logan, request to host Sergeant Daniel Vassiliyan, Memorial Road Race. Jill, please.
Thank you. So, as many of you guys know, Sergeant Daniel Vassiliyan was killed in action on December 23rd over in Afghanistan. His wife and his family have set up a foundation to raise money to help other military families who suffer loss, or other military organizations that step forward to help them in their time of need. They're also hoping to do things like post scholarships at the Abington High School, or help if any member of our community faces crisis and needs help. What we're proposing to do is a 5K road race held on Veterans Day in honor of our veterans. We would like to start at the Abington Police Station and use a similar route that they use for the Community Partners 5K Road Race. After speaking with Chief Majenski and Deputy Chief Cutter, they said that they could work with us with setting up some, you know, any police details or roadblocks that we would need. It's a nonprofit organization, and we would be using the money for helping other people.
Good cause, thank you. Questions?
Do you have a time that you're going to do it?
It would be after the parade.
That's what I was...
Yes, he said he wasn't sure about exactly timing-wise until he could talk with whoever actually organizes the parade, and making sure that it would be afterwards, and kind of using some of the same police officers that are on duty, you know, we could help out with the roadblocks and everything like that, and we would use the police station. They have a function room there that we could start for the signup.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I will move we approve the request to hold a memorial run on November 11th for, in the memory of Sergeant Vassiliyan. Second?
A motion by Mr. Dunham, and second by Mr. Dion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Very much.
Thank you, Jill. And if there's anything you need from us, give us a shout. Thank you.
Are you going to run it?
The members of the Board of Selectmen are probably going to want to enter, but you might want to put stripes on them so they can tell if they're running or rolling.
Except for Andy.
They got to do the parade, then the road race, that's right.
Thank you. At 6:35 we have Jim Powers and Craig Peacock, Powers &amp; Sullivan, 2013 Audit Report. Jim? Or Craig, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. For the record, my name's Craig Peacock. I know many of you know Jim Powers. We had a little scheduling conflict today, so he wasn't able to make it down with us. With me is Daniele Delem, who is a senior on the Town of Abington's audit, and, you know, I think we have a really good message tonight, to be honest with you. We're here to talk about the Fiscal 13 reports, which include the financial statements, the management letter, and the federal report on federal award programs, excuse me. What I'd like to do to start with in the financials is just give you a few highlights of what's different in these financials compared to financials you've seen in the past. Fiscal 13, we implemented, the town had to implement what we call GASB 63. What that did was, on your full accrual statements, it changed it from the statement of net position to the state, excuse me, from the statement of net assets to the statement of net position. What it also did was is added some additional disclosure in the footnotes referring to deferred inflows and deferred outflows, which didn't really come into play with 63 a lot, so there, other than the title change on your statement, nothing else is really different for you this year. In the future, with GASB 67 and 68, there could be some significant changes. They're talking about, you, Abington doesn't have to worry about the pension funding side of it, but you have your other post-employment benefit unfunded liability. What they're talking about is having that currently, you'll see when we get to the numbers, that we just pick up the difference in our annual required contributions for the OPEB in what we made. So that delta of what was not made in the current year ends up getting picked up as a liability. In the future, they're looking on taking your actuarially determined unfunded liability and putting that on your statement of net position. Not just in Abington, but that's across the state, and what that's going to do is essentially bring you to a deficit net position that's going to be probably 80% to 90% of our clients, other than the very few that have really started to fund that liability. That's still kind of being worked out. Most of that's going to come into play for Fiscal 15, so it's, we don't have all the answers yet, but that is what's coming down the pike as far as 67 and 68. The other new thing on your financials this year is you're probably all used to hearing that you received an unqualified opinion. This year's report is referred to as an unmodified opinion. The AICPA has been working to converge the United States auditing standards and international auditing standards, and as a result, the term unqualified is no longer used. Synonymous with that now is unmodified. The town has, as you'll see, has received an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, which is the best that you can get. It is what the town would want. Also, in Fiscal 13, the town established the other post-employment benefit trust fund to, and we put about $17,000 of seed money in, and I understand that there was a transfer voted of $109,000 for Fiscal 14 to start putting money into that fund. Although the current unfunded liability is about $41.5 million, the, because you established it, and because you're starting to put money aside, the rating agencies now are starting to look at this. More and more of your peers are starting to put some money aside, most at a nominal level, there's very few that are, you know, have millions of dollars in there currently. So what they're looking to say is they're, we haven't seen any rating agencies utilize this in uptick or downtick, if you will, for your bond ratings. However, we see in the next three to five, based on conversations we've had with the rating agencies, that if, for instance, the Town of Abington had done nothing, but yet all of your peers, as far as the rating agency, have, that can maybe start to say, well, why isn't Abington doing something? And they'll look at your cash flow and that type of thing, and could potentially have a downtick in your bond rating. However, again, as of the end of Fiscal 14, because of the 109, you know, we should be getting up into the 130 to the 150 range with investment income, and my understanding is, is that we're going to try to have a vote each year to put something into that fund. So that's, that's very positive as well. So, moving into the financial statements, and again, please feel free to yell with questions along the way, or at the end, or whatever is most convenient. Again, so as I mentioned, you have a, the town has an unmodified opinion on their financial statements. That is the best you can get. Throughout the conduct of our audit, information was received timely. 99% of information was accurate the first time through. Your town accountant worked heavily, both with Daniele on our team, as well as the Water Department, the Sewer Department, on their fixed asset balances, which have been a slight struggle over the last number of years, but I think you'll see when we get to the management letter, those comments have been resolved. Your town accountant did a really nice job working with those department heads and getting the information into a new software that's going to facilitate timely and accurate fixed asset reporting going forward. I think you'll see that when we, there are no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies in your management letter, or your federal report, which is key. That's, those are the terms you don't want to hear. This is the third year of the implementation of GASB 54, in which we've had an additional footnote in the back that helps the readers understand the level of constraint on the funds within general fund, you know, any of the major funds, non-major fund, that type of thing. Depending on the level of vote to actually secure those funds is how GASB 54 wants. Rather than before, we used to have just designated and unreserved, and it was hard to really know what of those funds are available, what are they available for, and are there any current constraints on them. GASB 54 helps to alleviate that, and it's required a new, and that's footnote eight in the back of the report, that allows you to see the level of constraint and what funds are essentially restricted for. We briefly spoke about the OPEB liability, which is the other post-employment benefits, that in the future, potentially, the unfunded liability will make it on your books. Currently, on this year's report, again, it's still just the delta between what your actuarially determined required contribution for the fiscal year is, and what was actually made. And so this year, we have an $11.1 million liability on your statement of net position, which is up about $1.9 million over Fiscal 12. Moving into the general fund, we had a budgetary deficit at the end of the year of about $108,000. However, what's important to note is that we also budgeted about $800,000 of free cash to balance the budget, and we had to raise funds for prior-year deficits, mainly snow and ice. So with that 108, it's also essentially, our collections were stronger, we were about $614,000 higher than budget, and what that's doing is it's hiding the fact that we had about a $535,000 snow and ice deficit for Fiscal 13. So if we pull out the snow and ice deficit, we really had positive budgetary results of what's around, we'll call it $400,000. So that's pretty good, overall, considering what we've seen the last, I remember back in Fiscal 9, we had, Dora, you may remember, we had deficit fund balance in the general fund, and we, and I believe the stabilization fund back then was under $10,000. We currently have just about $1,001,000 in the stabilization fund. There's $800,000 of unrestricted in the general fund, which last year was about $1 million, and the reason it's down a little is because some of that was appropriated in Fiscal 13 for the paydown of short-term debt for some capital projects going on, as well as some other articles that were voted to help fund some capital projects. So we're, we've been building up our reserves and using it so that the treasurer doesn't have to go out and borrow for all of the small projects going on. So it really makes sense. We've seen a, we've seen a vast improvement over the last five years of working to control our budgets. Collections on the treasurer's side are still very strong. We have about 98.6% of current year commitments are collected in the first year. Again, controlling costs. Snow and ice, it's been a bad winter. I think we're seeing snow and ice pretty much everywhere we've been. So I have not seen the Fiscal 14 tax recap yet, however, the snow and ice deficit would have been accounted for on, on the recap. Again, I mentioned revenues came in about $641,000 higher than budget. $335,000 of that related to the treasurer's tracking down, working with residents in collection of tax liens, before it has to go to the foreclosure process. So I think that's a big plus as well, that the treasurer has been able to work with many residents and come up with agreements to get these collections before having to go to the foreclosure process. Structurally, the operations are sound currently. In the general fund, debt service is about 3.7% of your budget. For quite a few clients, it's actually a tad bit on the low end. Sometimes the rating agencies, especially in times now where debt is relatively cheap, you know, they want to make sure that you're able to build up your reserves, and/or they don't negatively look, we see, you know, 6%, 7%, 8% somehow is not really that bad. More than 75% of our clients are probably in the 6% to 8% range on debt service, but what that tells you, and we just mentioned that in the general fund, about 500 grand was utilized in Fiscal 13 to help fund some capital projects and the paydown of debt, that's actually allowing you, because of strong collections, controlling your budgets, money dropping to the bottom line, that you're able to utilize and offset future interest costs by funding these smaller projects on a pay-as-you-go basis. So that's very positive. We had mentioned that the stab fund now is at a balance of about $1.1 million. The town voted to transfer $400,000 into it in Fiscal 13, so that's very positive as well. And we had mentioned here, we had discussed slightly, that since '09 to Fiscal 13, we've seen the general fund go from a deficit, $780,000, if my memory serves me correct, now to a total fund balance, you know, over $1 million in the plus. So that's, that's really good progress. Enterprise funds, Gulf Enterprise, pretty consistent each year. It's mainly the rental of the building and some minor operational costs. So Gulf normally sees a nominal $10,000 to $20,000 increase in their bottom line each year. This year was about $14,000. Sewer fund, we decreased $422,000 this year, mostly related to depreciation of fixed assets added over the last year, not necessarily in Fiscal 13, but 12 as well, so the depreciation kicks in and increases in Fiscal 13. Slight increase in OPEB and other operating costs, including the interminable charges for our sewer. So that, that was up a little bit in Fiscal 13. Your water fund, essentially a break-even, it had an increase of $45,000. I know there was some slight increases in the water rates, which helped to offset the OPEBs and the operational costs there, ultimately netted about $45,000 to the plus for the water fund this year. Another new thing for the town this year is that the town voted to adopt enterprise fund accounting for your ambulance operations. So that's now being accounted for as an enterprise fund. If you simply looked at the statement, you'd see a bottom line net increase of a little over $900,000, however, $300,000 of that related to current operations, $615,000 of that related to the transfer in of the residual in the ambulance receipts reserve fund that had been ongoing prior to adoption of enterprise fund accounting. Some of the major classifications going right down the town's balance sheet that we looked at, cash, it's a big one. We look at every cash account, all of the reconciliations, the reconciling items, make sure that makes sense. There was about $11.5 million of cash at fiscal year-end, which included the OPEB trust fund. Essentially, all funds of the town, both general, grant funds, gift funds, and all the federal and grant funds are included in that number. Capital assets is a big one. Town saw an increase this year in their capital assets of about $930,000 before depreciation, mainly due to infrastructure, roadwork. There was some new equipment, police cruisers. I believe assessing got some new GIS software, that type of thing. Those were the major increases on the capital, excuse me, on the governmental side. Water fund saw a net increase of about $228,000 before depreciation. Again, those were mainly related to the joint, the Abington-Rockland Joint Waterworks project, as well as we've been installing a lot of meters over the last few years. So that also took place in Fiscal 13. Sewer fund didn't actually have any capital asset adds this year. So the depreciation was about $900,000, so overall, their net fixed assets, investment fixed assets decreased by the equal to the depreciation of $900,000 there. And Gulf Fund went up about $45,000, which they put in a fuel storage facility on the, excuse me, on the golf course, as well as additional improvements to the irrigation systems throughout the golf course. Moving to the liability side, biggest liabilities there would be long and short-term debt. In Fiscal 13, we mainly issued about $890,000 of short-term debt, bond anticipation notes. Those were for projects at the Woodsdale School, a feasibility study for the, do I have the name right, Fro Leo Middle School, as well as Memorial Arch, and then the Groveland land purchase. So that was, that was what the short-term debt related to. On the long-term debt side, there was no general obligation bonds issued. It was mostly about $510,000 of mass water pollution abatement trust debt related to various water infrastructure projects. So at the end of Fiscal 13, that leaves us with about $9 million in governmental long-term bonds, $100,000 left on the sewer side, so they'll be borrowing any new debt issued on sewer in Fiscal 14, they'll have that paid down in Fiscal 14, and there's about $5.2 million on the water side related to long-term debt. Landfill accrual liability this year equaled $4.3 million. That's the net of the, based on the engineering information that we obtained. The increase going forward, minus the cost incurred in Fiscal 13, so there was about a net of $125,000 increase, because we had like 4.1 and some change in Fiscal 12, it's up to 4.3 at the end of Fiscal 13. Something else that we do is what we call transaction testing. We look at your revenue cycle, your expenditure cycle, your payroll cycle, procurement, the granting of appellate tax board abatements. Throughout your revenue expenditures, oh, excuse me, we also look at journal entries posted. Revenue expenditures, journal entries, we've had all proper supporting documentation, and there were no abnormalities there. On the payroll side, as far as payments, the wages being paid, everything was complete and accurate, and all supporting documentation was available. We'll see when we get to the management letter, the only, what I'll call a finding we did have, is on the school side, they have some new personnel. August of 1986, we were required to keep an I-9 on file for all new employees. Anyone pri, at the school side, seven years ago, which was when some new personnel came, seven years and current, everything was available. Prior seven years, there were some that were not available, and they're working on the new employee package, and whenever these, the older employees, I know the business manager over there, they were working on putting together a listing of who was not available, and they're working to obtain the proper documentation for the, you know, the older employees.
What's an I-9?
I-9, 9 simply says that you're eligible to work in the United States, you have a social security number, an address. It's sort of like a W-9 that the town would get when they're going to do work with a particular vendor. This is on the individual side, again, assuming, assuring that you're eligible to work in the United States, whether you're, you know, a citizen, or you have the various paperwork necessary to be here and work, that you have a social security number, and it's utilized so that if either you're going on the payroll, or you're going to be paid a 1099 at the end of the year, they have all necessary information to go ahead and provide those ATB case review, all proper documentation was there. Everything that we had for all cases and abatements granted was properly supported. On the procurement side, all proper documentation was there, with the exception of two procurements. There were the, the documentation wasn't readily available as far as the bid process and the contract awarding. I know I, I met with both your town manager, assistant town manager, and various department heads that were involved, and I, my understanding is that there definitely, work has been already looked into, and discussions of how can we better keep tabs and keep track to assure that no contract slips through the cracks without the proper procurement documents being processed. And overall, that's, that's an overview of your financials. I mean, I think we've come a long way in the last few years, again, with having the stab fund grown to over $1 million, over $1 million in your general fund. We feel very positive. I mean, I think your financial office is doing what they're supposed to do. We are in working with your treasurer and your accounting office, your cash, your receivables, the big-ticket items, they're being reconciled on a monthly basis. There are no, from what we've seen, unsubstantiated reconciling items, meaning, you know, a lot of noise on the reconciliation. They're clean, things are being looked at and researched timely. We thought the financial side of the audit went very well.
If I could, a quick question on the, as it relates to OPEB, with the new standards, accounting standards coming into play, and when OPEB is brought, the deficiency or the liability is brought formally, I guess for lack of a better word, on the books, will that affect the free cash calculation at the end of that?
It shouldn't, because that is going to be on the entity-wide statements for the full accrual. Generally speaking, the Department of Revenue is looking at your budgetary basis of accounting, and they may take into account 60-day receipts if it's common for the community and stuff like that, but when you get to your entity-wide, we're picking up these full accrual liabilities, as well as the fixed assets and a lot of other stuff, that at this point in time, the rating agencies aren't looking at. So again, the liability may not impact, but they're going to start to look at the Town of Abington compared to your peers. Are, are you all kind of going down the same road, starting to look at these things, starting to fund them, in which in case you have started in 13, and that shows pause, steps in a positive direction?
There we go. Thank you.
And just for clarity, oh, I'm sorry.
Just to follow on on the OPEB cost, so those are other post-employment benefits. Pension, health?
Not pension, mainly the healthcare.
Okay.
Mainly healthcare.
Okay, and I guess my question is, when I noticed that year-over-year, the increase in our obligation is almost $2 million, 1.9?
Why?
Yeah.
Everything. Essentially, what communities have been doing for many, many years, no one has ever had to quantify this GASB 45 liability. That came in about five years ago now. So every two years, the town is procuring a actuarial valuation to be done, to look at both current employees, retirees, spouses, everyone collecting the health benefits at, you know, upon retirement, and they, again, sometimes we wonder how actuaries come up with all their info, but you know, they have all their charts and their graphs of expected life expectancy and that type of thing, and sometimes what I've seen also affect the numbers are the types of health plans offered year after year, if there's a difference in the premiums. There's, there's a whole myriad of attributes that go into the completion of an actuarial on OPEB, and most clients are doing what we call a pay-as-you-go. So you're, you're paying the necessary benefits for that year for your both current, you know, active, and active employees and current retirees, but the ARC, as the actuarial refers to it, the annual required contribution, now is amortizing a piece of that unfunded liability that's been there, because these figures have never had to be quantified before. And currently, there's no mandate to fund GASB 45, the OPEB obligation. So again, by going on pay-as-you-go, where we're not picking up that unfunded piece each year, it's, and Abington, you know, compared to your peers, you're kind of right in line in the 41, 41.5 million unfunded liability. Some of the larger communities, large cities, they're having 20, 30 million dollars a year added to that liability. But it is, it's a function of, of the actuarial and the attributes used, the rate of return used, which this, in the last round of actuarial evaluations, many actuaries have been at the 8%, and now they've been downticking a little bit based on the historical, and again, they're not always looking at, I know we've had a great market the last 12 months, but prior to that, they weren't so hot for a few years, but they're looking at the trend over 20, 30 years, as opposed to just one year or two years, to try to determine what value should they be using. But again, we've seen more and more actuarial firms downtick from the 8% to a 7.5, a 7.2, which has a significant impact on that unfunded liability.
Okay, thank you. The other question is, in your management letter, you have a whole gang of policies, plans that you've reviewed. Looks like we're making some good progress in some areas, some we've completed, others may be less progress, but still making progress. From a board perspective, what should this board, out of all of them, because I don't see them prioritized, is there any in here that, as the Board of Selectmen, we should be focusing on? Because obviously, we have limited resources as far as looking at these. Is there something that we should concentrate on?
As far as the management letter as a whole, and the status of comments?
Because I see these as like, yeah, 20, 30, and for me, I don't know if there's some that are more...
More important than the next.
Yeah.
Most definitely. If I may, I believe I might get one more question on the financials. If I may, I, I believe might get one more question on the financials, potentially?
Yeah, just on the, on, it's kind of a post-employment benefits, just two things. We, right now, two thousand and thirteen, we have three hundred and twenty-eight employees, and our total accumulated post-employment benefit obligation is forty-one million, five hundred and seven thousand. In two thousand and thirty, we get down to three hundred and five retirees, I don't want to say this, but a, a post-employment obligation is seventy million, almost, yeah, seventy million dollars. Why the employment's going down? Why, yeah, and all the way down to like, you know, when it goes to two thousand and fifty-two, we go to two hundred and forty-three employees. Why is that?
Well, again, what the actuaries do is they take in a whole myriad of various attributes that they utilize to conduct and prepare these reports. Now, where we just said that the town isn't currently meeting the annual required contribution, that means this year we said a million nine went into the current liability, so that's for past service costs that we haven't made. So there's going to be, you know, and history shows us, at least for the last five years, it's been in the ballpocket of a million nine or so adding to the liability for the Town of Abington. So what they do is there's interest that's calculated on, on that, and there are, some of their attributes change, because if the million nine had been put in each and every year, those assets are there earning for the years, which will help offsetting the unfunded liability going forward. So I agree in your, and since you're seeing the employees change, sometimes what that's also doing is the demographics of the employees are changing, if you could have, and again, I don't, we'd have to give the actuarial a call to understand how they go down to the lower number, but it could be there's more current younger folks that, that they're assuming aren't going to be taking as many health benefits at that point in time, and then they, they extrapolate out on the, you know, the older generations, more retiree, the, so the split between retirees and actives at that point could be a little bit different. It's, I, I'd say one of the major is the fact that the, the annual required contribution is not made each year, and it's the lost interest earnings on that million nine, the million nine from the last five years, so now we're talking ten million dollars that really could have gone towards this, that they have to factor in those lost investment earnings, and it kind of flows right through their thirty-year schedule. But what happens is, because of the size of the town and the number of employees you have in your plan, which exceeds two hundred, there's, if you were a smaller community with under two hundred, there, you can have a new valuation every three years. In this case, the town's required every two years to have a new valuation, and all of those, the market, the demographics of your, of the people claiming, of your current employees, your retirees, the, every two years, all of those attributes are looked at by the actuary through conversations with town personnel, HR, you know, all the information they need to prepare, and that's why sometimes, that's why the Gatsby requires one every two years, because there could be significant changes and they want to be able to capture, so that the trend that you just saw there over what I'll call ten-year period may never come to fruition.
How much should we be putting aside right now? How much, like, we, we did, we, we, a few years ago, we, it was peric, the pension liability and the post-employment obligation, which is medical, so we had two liabilities, one being pensions, and one being, and both of them were, I, I think it's an excellent idea that finally, you know, we're not kicking the can down the road, so to speak, we're kind of step up and we got to face the reality, so it's, I think it's a great idea that we, every two years, we're getting this, but we did start a trust fund.
Yes.
How much should we be putting in there every year?
Well, you know, what I'll say is, I'm not sure that there's an absolute black and white answer to how much. I mean, if we look just to say, well, we know your ARC, we were, your, your total annual OPEB cost for fiscal thirteen would be three and a half million, and we put in approximately a million seven, so the million nine delta that we didn't fund went towards the liability. Now, what we've, we're seeing a lot of clients do is, you mentioned pension, more and more people, as their pension assessment is either diminishing because their, their pension system is starting to get more closer to fully funded, some have not gone out to the twenty forty date that is allowed now, some have stayed around twenty twenty-eight, some have gone to twenty thirty-two, they're trying to say, okay, when our assessment goes down and we're fully funded on that side, let's divert those funds over to OPEB. We have clients that are trying to now come up with policies that say, well, if we end up with a million dollars free cash each year, let's take fifteen percent and put that into OPEB each year. So we've seen really, the, the policies that various clients are coming up with really run the gamut, there's no one right answer, fits all, I think you have to, the, the Town of Abington has to kind of fit it into, you know, your budget, if you will, without trying to cut services offered, so it's, I mean, the markets are still down, so the, the investment income able to be earned is much lower than maybe, hopefully it might be in the next four or five years. I think what, again, what we're seeing is communities are looking at their operating budgets, seeing where available funds are, are being freed up, maybe coming up with policies as far as free cash and the amount of reserves that they might want to have within a stabilization fund or the general fund, and developing policies that way to say, we think we can put in two hundred thousand dollars per year, that type of thing. Now, one, one other quick aside to that is, at, you know, seventeen thousand, a hundred thousand, what that doesn't allow you to do, when the actuary does your report, there's what we call pre-funding and then pay-as-you-go. Currently, I bet you eighty-five percent of our clients are still on a pay-as-you-go. If you get to the point where, one, you're either making your complete ARC, rather than using, you know, four, they can go up to that seven and a quarter to eight percent, depending on the market at that time, which, your ten-year trend there shows the investment earnings is much higher, which essentially drops that unfunded liability dramatically. The other side, if you're able to not put in the full ARC, but you're able to get, let's say, I've seen most people use fifty to sixty percent, most of the actuaries, if you can get up to making fifty to sixty percent, which rather than having two million go to your liability each year, let's say you get to the point where that milli, extra million's going in, you then get to use what we call a blended rate on your actuarial. So rather than using four, because they're, you're not putting a whole lot aside, you may not get the eight, because you're not funding all, but they may be able to blend you five and three-quarters, six percent, which actually has a huge impact on your unfunded liability as well. So the process of getting started with the trust fund is very positive, as you suggest, as the fiscal years move on and you're able to start to increase the yearly sum put into that trust fund, will help the actuarial be able to move you closer and closer to a blended rate, which you'll see dramatic decreases in your unfunded liability.
Thank you.
I know we have a question on the management letter, if I may, real quick, go through the federal award report, that'll take literally thirty seconds. The town this year, again, has unmodified opinions on their federal financial report, that is the best that you can get. The town expended about a million three worth of federal funds, of which we were required to test the special education cluster this year, which accounted for five hundred and fifteen thousand, or close to sixty, excuse me, forty percent of all federal dollars spent in fiscal thirteen. Two small findings we had this year with the school department on the special ed program that we had to look at, one of the final reports was filed late, and there's things called monthly activity reports and personnel activity reports, depending on if your salary is being paid a hundred percent or partially from the grants. I know in working with the school, that procedures have already been in place to assure that these findings will be corrected for the fiscal fourteen audit. So essentially, a clean report, a couple of small findings that I know have already been addressed and corrected. Leads us to the management letter. Management letter this year has essentially eighteen comments, it sounds like a lot, however, twelve of those comments were carryovers from the prior year, and I think the very positive impact was that eight of those, eight out of those twelve comments were completely resolved. So that means that your departments are working together, they're working on, you know, different policies, the fixed assets we spoke about, your town accountant worked very hard in getting that resolved, just the, the fact that the town received the proper post-employment benefit actuarial evaluations in time for the report. There's four prior comments that were unresolved, that through our conversations and a meeting we had to discuss, we answered comments, all are in the process of being addressed. Now I know fiscal fourteen ends, you know, in a few months, however, I would expect that some of those will be definitely addressed, because I believe they've all been addressed, but resolved by the end of fiscal fourteen, with anything that might lag clearly being resolved in fiscal fifteen. There's been, we, you know, by the time we were able to meet, it was January or so, if I remember correctly, so the amount of time in order to really jump in and work on these by the end of fiscal fourteen is limited, but I know that there's been positive progress made on those remaining four. And then of the six, there are six new comments this year, which, nothing, again, rose to the level of material weakness or significant deficiency, they're all what we call items that we felt important to note and bring up for the town, however, they were all operational type comments that could help in the effectiveness and efficiency of the internal controls in the various departments. With one of the six only being what we refer to as an informational comment, which is the comment on the future Gaspys, and that's a discussion of the sixty-seven and sixty-eight that we have briefly, briefly touched on. I'm not sure if you want any further discussion of the new comments, I know, again, that through our meeting, we've, we've talked about them all, and I, and, you know, from what I saw and what I've heard, your man, management was very proactive in addressing these and working to implement policies and procedures to help resolve these within fiscal fourteen, and/or fifteen at this point, but, thank you.
Questions?
Could you just highlight the four that are carryovers from?
Absolutely. One of them being disaster recovery plan, within the last, I believe, two years ago, the town hired a new information technology department head, and lots of progress has been made as far as our backups of the general ledger system, what happens in case of an emergency and that type of thing. From our standpoint, a disaster recovery plan, and after our meeting, I believe, I sent him to maybe both, maybe, I believe, Dory maybe, or, or Leo, I know at, at least, some samples from other communities. A comprehensive disaster recovery plan not only accounts for the backing up of our general ledger and making sure that our financial records are backed up and supported, but what happens if your employees show up tomorrow and town hall had a gas leak and blew up overnight? Who do we see? How do we run payroll? Where do we go for our important, our financial operations? How do we pay our bills? Those are the type of things that a comprehensive disaster plan should outline, and I know that it's, it's being worked on currently, and normally what we'll see is it'll be raised to the board's level for maybe some review and/or acceptance, just so that everybody's kind of on the same page with sort of the, you know, there's always a cost benefit with certain things, and/or the level of risk that the Town of Abington is willing to accept for any disasters that might occur. So that was one of them. Student activity accounts maintained at the school through the Masbo and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, there are some prescribed and preferred requirements that both internally, these accounts be looked at every year, and then once every three years, an outside independent audit by either your audit firm or another audit firm is recommended. Both your town accountant and your business manager over at the school have implemented procedures, and I believe that that was occurring in this just as previous January, to start the reviews, so come the end of fiscal fourteen, I'm very confident that we're going to have something to review as far as the internal review, and that can occur for the next couple of years, and then conversations will occur with the school to determine the scheduling and timing of an external audit, as we would call it, audit review of the, the activities flowing through the student activity accounts. Third one would be the zoning board agency funds. Kind of, there's about twenty-four thousand dollars that are sitting on the general ledger, many of you are probably aware, as projects, as vendors come into the town to do various projects, they could be zoning, they could be planning, DPW, a lot of times, monies are required to be deposited just in case the project is not accepted at the end, or your, the vendor hired, you know, leaves town or what have you, there's some funds available to finish the project. In this case, there's, again, a few accounts on the ledger that have been, what I'll call stagnant, have changed for a number of years. In our opinion, we don't have all the records, more than likely what we see happen is, you know, XYZ company was owed five thousand, it may have flowed through to the general fund at one point in time, so what we're asking is, and we've been told this is being, this will occur within fiscal fourteen, to review and see if any of the vendors that are still being accounted for on the ledger are owed funds. If they are, the comment goes away, and it sits until those projects are approved, and the zoning board in this case approves the release of those funds. If they've been completed and the contractors in this case have previously been made whole, the twenty-four thousand could potentially increase your free cash in the general fund if it's determined that that's where the payments have been made and those funds can be closed out to the general fund. So my assumption is that that will take place within fiscal fourteen, based on my previous discussions. And then another one that came up back in fiscal twelve, through conversations with the previous town manager and other department heads, was that certain departments have an assistant, if you will, so if, meaning an assistant treasurer, assistant town accountant, somebody with the credentials, the education, the expertise to walk in and handle that position of town accountant, town treasurer, should there suddenly be, someone wins the mega box and doesn't show up, or a, a health issue or something. And the discussions at, at the end of fiscal twelve were that they, the, men, a lot of management department heads and the town manager at that time felt that not all key financial departments had someone that could walk in and assume the role of their, their senior at, at that point in time. Discussions with our current management and department heads was that we felt this was a valid point to discuss and look at, and because your new town manager had been, you know, was just sort of coming into town at the end of this audit, we felt, and I think through discussions, we felt it was important to let this flow through the next fiscal year or two, so that discussions can be had, the organizational structure within your financial offices can be reviewed, and a determination made with current management if they feel either additional training for current employees, or maybe a new hire could be necessary to assist and help circumvent any problems or issues that could come up, should your, you know, your main department head suddenly not come back to work, for whatever the reason might be.
Okay, thank you.
So this particular one was raised primarily by management initially, is that how it?
Correct. Correct.
Great, thank you.
Further questions?
That's an overall summary of, of all reports.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, it was well done.
Thank you very much.
You know.
Thank you.
Question, you're about the only person around to tell us we're doing a good job, but that's. Let's see, action, discussion items, approval of March tenth, two thousand and fourteen, open session minutes.
Will they be approved?
Have a motion by Mr. Burbine?
Second.
Second by Mr. Coyle, any further discussion? Not all in favor?
I think.
All opposed, that's unanimous? You, or you, okay, one, so, four, zero, one, Dory, one, yeah. Item two is vote to, vote intent to lay out the following roads of public ways, refer the layouts to the planning board, adopt orders of layout, and file the layouts and plans with the town clerk at least seven full days prior to town meeting. It would be Bradford Street, Colontonia Way, and Gene. It would be Bradford Street, Colentonia Way, and Jean Carroll Road. Now, we had a very lengthy email trail on this back and forth, so.
Can you read it? No.
Most of it, it could have been Japanese, it would have made as much sense to me, but... What's the, uh, will of the board, or wish of the board?
Could I, I just, the, uh...
Question. There was an email back and forth between town council and the developer's attorney, and it kind of ended, and I asked her if there was any further follow-up from our council, because their, their counsel kind of put his thoughts out there, and then there wasn't a further response as to whether or not she advised to go forward with his recommendation or with her initial recommendation.
This is the last email. This has been going on.
It's, I know it has, yeah.
Last email from the developer's attorney to town council.
Right. Keep, keep in mind a couple of points. Number one, as you know, the planning board has made their recommendation to the Board of Selectment, um, and I think it's safe to say that, that the, the attorneys will be having some continued discussions regarding this as time goes on, regardless of the board's vote to some extent. So, what, I guess the question is, you know, what, what concerns would the board have specifically about the layout as recommended by the planning board right now? It, it, that might be beyond the, the issues raised by town council, or by, yeah, by the, exactly by town council.
Well, her, her, her email was concerning drainage easements and whether or not we had to get, um, sign-offs from current mortgage holder on one particular lot. Her concern was if the bank, and this probably would not happen, but if the bank or, or the next property owner, if the bank foreclosed on the property, then they could conceivably wipe out the, the town's ability to come in and do anything, and they could basically terminate the drainage easement because they're in first position and the, the easement is in second position, and, um, so she and the developer's attorney, again, had a back and forth, and there was really no, no, no conclusion to that. Final resolution from her, at least, as to where we should go with that.
I mean, just, just to dovetail on that, I, I think the position, to some degree, of the town's attorney was that we should take this by eminent domain, and I think caused a lot of dialogue between both of these attorneys.
Several, yeah, she says several towns routinely take easements by eminent domain while others don't. Of course, this is a decision to be made by the Board of Selectment.
Right.
So, she puts it in our lap, but, again, then after that was a, an email from the developer's attorney, kind of discounting her opinion, and so I was kind of concerned as to whether or not she thought it was advisable to do that or not.
I mean, I, I guess I would just ask, the planning boards made a recommendation, which is to approve based on these contingencies. I guess I'd ask you, Rick, what would be your recommendation? Do you have any qualms in moving forward in adopting planning board's recommendation?
Town council's here, maybe.
My only, the answer is no, but I think any vote you take would be subject to final approval by town council. That, that's, would be typical of a road acceptance.
Yeah, you don't, oh, Kevin, I'm sorry.
Um, I think this is one step in the process. Obviously, to lay it out is more of a procedural issue. It's more, for lack of a better word, to spreading the incense around and just saying that the road is where they say it's going to be. The final vote would rest, obviously, with town meeting, and I, I, I understand Andy's concerns, because in different communities, the roads, the people own, I know, at least in the county, when we did a county layout, the people would own to the center of the road, and then they would deed their portion of the road back to the county or to the respective town. So, in each individual community, it depends, it's how do you like to handle it, so to speak. But I think the consideration, as I understand it before us right now, is more or less to enact the formal laying out process, if you will. It's a formality that we, we say, okay, the road is laid out in accordance with the plan. Now, the intricacies of what happens after that fact, generally speaking, then the planning board would, would derive all of that and make a final recommendation at town meeting, so that if they, they haven't satisfied everything, um, you know, as it relates to that, then we would, I guess, move to pass over. But I think from a procedural standpoint, I, I would see no problem moving forward to allow it to go to the, those steps and allow that, if there is an issue, both councils to get together and try and resolve it prior to the town meeting.
That's fine. I, I just, the question I did have is, and I, I think it all stems, we're all talking about the same thing, is that Jack Kane said that the town accepts responsibility of water line from the main to the curb box and the sewer from the main to the property line, and I think that was the issue, was whether or not, if there was an easement, as I understood.
No, this is one particular lot that is, is, there's a drainage easement in the back. It has nothing to do with the water line or the sewer line. There's a drainage easement in the back, and her concern was, again, because the bank is in first position, and our easement would come in afterwards, then if they foreclosed on the property, then the bank would have prior rights and be able to pull up whatever was constructed there. Probably never will happen.
Probably.
She raised the issue, so I was just wondering if she has given up on the issue or if she was still concerned.
I don't think, I think, at the end of the day, I think it was just left, up in the air. I mean, that's what I go on.
That's how, that's...
There, there hasn't been a conclusion between the, uh, the legal minds. That's correct.
So, I, I do agree with Mr. Donovan on that.
And there never will be if the board doesn't.
Yeah. No, no, no. I agree with Mr. Donovan. I mean, we can always address that at a later date, once we, this is about just passing it back to the planning board.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, is that, what is the, what is the procedure now? If we accept these, what happens next?
Yeah, if you, if you accept these, then what would happen is, obviously, the, the lawyers would continue to do their work, but the planning board would have to do what Kevin suggested, and make sure that everything is exactly as it was essentially put on the plans. And eventually, whether it's this town, well, actually, as you know, there's an article in this town meeting to accept these roads, um, if the planning board concurs, they will make a recommendation for the town to accept these, that they are in accordance with the And I know, I know it's, it's always a little bit difficult, because obviously, it's in the town's interest to make sure that all, that the work is done appropriately, but the residents generally, obviously, are, their interest is making sure that their town has an accepted town roadway for all the benefits that come with that, so, uh, but for all intents and purposes, you know, these roads, as I understand it, are being treated like town roadways, um, as I understand it at least, so.
Well, there's three roads, right? One of them, the planning board has no problem with, is ready to go now.
Yes.
I mean, we could vote on that separate if you wanted to. Um, and just so people know what we're talking about, one of the streets, uh, it's just, uh, the planning board's looking for them to raise the fire hydrant, clear the detention basins, and rid the detention area of all the brush. And what happens is the planning board holds a surety, it holds cash on hand until, and they won't return it until all this work is done. So, it, it's kind of, uh, it's kind of good, the planning, good, planning board is, uh, pretty up to date and make sure that, that they follow through with this, and I know some other boards may release the money sooner, but the planning board has been, has a history of not releasing the money until everything's all done, so I'm confident that that, this will take care of, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we move to layout of, formerly layout, Jean Carroll Road Way extension, Joseph D. Colentonia Way, and Bradford Street, in accordance with the submissions to us by the planning board.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Donovan.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Dion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Unanimous?
Not unanimous.
Not unanimous? I thought you said, okay.
I'll, I'm actually going to abstain, again, because I'm, I'm just concerned with that Jean Carroll Road and the, the issue between.
So, it would be 4-0-1. Thank you. Uh, number three is request for renewal of used article and pawnbroker's license. I think in your packet, you have a list of, uh... The petition is, so to speak, Hope Thrift Store, Suzie's Selections, Old Town Country Store, Electric Planet, Passion for Fashion, The Electric Collection, Déjà Vu Home Thrift Shop, ABC Tech Squad, and The Design Diva.
I'll move, we approve the fall, the licenses as presented to us pending receipt of all final paperwork, up-to-date tax payments, and inspections.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Donovan, second by Mr. Dion. Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Update on restoration of Island Grove Memorial Arch.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, as the board is aware, we recently went out to, to rebid the masonry work on the memorial arch, um, and there's two pieces to this project, and again, I know you are aware of this, but for the public's consumption, there's the masonry work, and there's also the bronze restoration work. The majority of that, the overwhelming, uh, uh, majority of this is the repair of the masonry work. Uh, the amount of money that was appropriated, um, was approximately $300,000. The first time we went out to bid, uh, we were concerned that the, uh, the amount of those bids was, was too high for us to do the entire project within the existing amounts. We also had some reason to believe that we, we might actually get some lower bids the second time around, so we did cancel the first bid, went out for a second round of bidding, and lo and behold, uh, the low bidder is pretty much where the low bidder was the last time. So, kudos to the bidding community. The problem is, is we've got, the low bid is in the $240,000 range. We have about $260,000 left to complete the project, which would not allow us enough money to do the bronze piece without a future, further appropriation. However, uh, there's a couple of different factors at work here. One, we are applying for additional grant funds to see if we can, uh, help supplement what we already have. Uh, we did get a small grant last year, as you know, $5,000 to help with this, so we're seeking additional funds. And the Tricentennial Committee also has some leftover funds, and they have discussed with me, uh, the, whether or not those would be suitable, uh, for use if they were to donate them for this project. In light of that, I think we would be very close, um, to being able to complete the project within the existing appropriation. I just wanted to let the board know, and, and unless you have any reservations, it would be my intent to award this bid as the procurement officer. I just want everyone to understand, there is a small risk that we may be seeking additional funds if, if some of these other supplemental funds don't come through, as we hope they do. But, uh, as, you know, we'd like to get this project moving, and we do have reason to believe that, that we will be able to do this within the existing appropriation. I just don't want there to be any surprises, uh, so the, and, and if you say nothing, I'm happy, uh, but unless you have any other ideas or concerns beyond what I've outlined, um, I would, I think now would be a good time to raise them. But in light of where we stand with the opportunities offered supplemental funding, I would like to move forward with the low, the lowest responsible bidder, um, this, this second round of bidding, because it's clear we're not going to be able to do better after two rounds of bidding where the numbers are about the same.
What's the bronze, bronze work estimated at cost?
About $240,000.
No, but just the bronze work itself?
Oh, the bronze work, that's about, I believe that's about 45, wow. I was actually, I'm usually, my memory's usually not as clear as that, but about $45,000. So, it's not out of the question. There will be some additional, uh, project management fees that won't be significant. Uh, so, as you can see, if we're able to access the tricentennial, um, funds, which I don't think would be in a, a, a problem, that is an issue that I will be making sure there's no legal issues with town council at some point. We are, it's close, but we're, we're pretty much right there. So, I wouldn't want to forego this process any longer, um, in light of those, uh, so I, I assume the Tricentennial Committee, and I don't know everybody who's on it, but Mr. Kelly, uh, and I had a nice conversation, uh, in fact, at the parade. It was a lucky day, despite the weather, and he, uh, and he suggested to me that they would have, they would like to make those funds available for this project if they could, so.
So, was the initial bid include the bronze?
No.
So, you'd have to bid that out separately?
That is, yeah, right. Exactly. So, that's where we stand, and then, as I said, only because there's, there's a, a small degree of risk here, I just want to bring it to your attention, that if these other supplemental areas don't, uh, don't come through as we hope, um, we would be seeking a supplemental appropriation in the future, and I just don't want the, to be any, any surprises if that should happen. So, beyond that, I'd like, I plan on moving forward, but you're, if, I would certainly respect your wishes tonight if you suggested I don't, but.
No.
No, I, I...
Been waiting.
I think anybody that's gone over there...
I've been waiting. Yes.
That, right now, there's cracks and everything else with the, the water getting in there. But my question would be, um, the, wouldn't you do them both at once? The bronze would seem to me like you'd have to... How, how would they handle, like, there's a big statue on the top, and there's a couple...
Right.
How, I, I understand, I would think that not to do the cement work or the archwork, that they'd have to, uh...
Right. My, correct me if, if you, I know you might have, Dory's been working a little closer on this, to some aspects of this than me, but my understanding is the bronze work's going to be removed...
Okay.
...from the masonry, um, bef, and then the ma, the masonry will be done, and then the bronze work would be repaired and reinstalled. Is that your understanding?
Well, actually, the understanding of the, it's, the understanding of the project manager is to keep the bronze released.
Just say no, Dory.
No.
Just say no.
The opposite. Actually, the project manager is saying that the eagle and the reliefs should remain on the structure while they do the, this cast stone treatment, and then address the, um, issues of the bronze, so that's the way they're approaching it.
So, it really doesn't have an effect on the work, on, on the archwork, so to speak?
No. And then what's the, exactly. They kind of wanted to do, they recommended we actually go out and do it separately, because there's no confusion of one project ended and when does the new project begin? Whose equipment is the, so it was kind of recommended, and it worked out that way anyway, go out for the, um, the stone, and then go out for the bronze.
Okay. How much did the town vote for this?
I believe it was $300,000, about two years ago, two or three years ago.
Was that, was that bonded, or was that? No.
No, that, that was, I think, authorized as a, um, as a bond, so essentially, that it's, it's money that currently, only a small piece of it has been short-term borrowed, and, and that will be, again, borrowed as necessary, so.
Any further questions?
Okay, we'll move on to town manager's report, please.
Couple of quick items for you tonight. First of all, just a, a quick update. The budget process moves forward. The finance committee has a meeting this week, which should hopefully wrap up their, their, uh, meetings with departments and, uh, presenters of petition articles. And I just, uh, um, I know you've heard this before, but currently, based upon budget, budget submissions, the town would be running about a $1.8 million budget deficit for next fiscal year, which, as you know, is not possible. And just for the, uh, just for round numbers, I thought it was helpful to isolate some of those factors, when you consider, um, that last year, we used one-time funds in the amount of about $536,000, which was the fund, our snow deficit, which, and when all is said and done, is, is not going to be substantially different at the end of this year, so we have to, we plan for that, unfortunately. Uh, the current VOTEC assessment is projected at about a $283,000 increase. We certainly hope that that will be reduced as the budget process at the VOTEC moves forward, and they make it, uh, some reductions to their projected increases. And the town's pension assessment is, will be up about $180,000. If you just look at those whole, those round numbers, and you put in the context of, of available revenue through Prop 2 and 1/2, with, that, those numbers are relatively close. Uh, so, in essence, the town is looking at inflationary increases this year without any additional new revenue, so, um, so those are the big numbers. We're obviously working to reduce, uh, you know, budget proposals are not, are, as you know, a lot different than the fixed increases, so, um, the week after next, it is my goal to try and provide the finance committee with a recommended budget that's balanced for the next fiscal year, so. Some of the problem, uh, that arises is, is fixed budgetary increases, as we'll be talking later tonight after the, in executive session, our, you know, our contract's status is different than that of the school administration, so tho, those are factors that, that will weigh into this as we move forward. Second item here, uh, the Veterans District, Service District, a, a quick update. This afternoon, the mail came in, and we did, if, we have got our conditional approval to move forward with the district from the State Department of Veterans Affairs. Uh, so, it was expected, but obviously, it's good news. Um, as I've laid out before, we do have, uh, position descriptions and examples of municipal agreements ready to go. Uh, the goal is to have this up and running July 1, uh, as we've currently, as we formally projected, and it seems like we're on target to do that. Your landfill closure update is at your next meeting. I know you're broken-hearted that that couldn't happen tonight, but, um, but, uh, in the meantime, I have forwarded you information, which, uh, some of it is, um, you'll find interesting, some of it you won't, but just to get a sense of the type of decision ultimately that the board will be asked to make, uh, probably in conjunction with the Board of Health. So, you have that well in advance, so that you can, uh, at least give some thought to it before the update. Uh, well, you won't be asked to take any votes at the next meeting, but, uh, ultimately, you will be asked to make some decisions with regard to the future of that location. And, uh, last item, I'm not going to get into the park and rec situation at the moment. It's really just more of ongoing business. Uh, but we did finally have our executed contract with our peer-to-peer, uh, for our peer-to-peer contract with Community and Development for the purpose of, of having, uh, to get some help outlining some changes on some, whether it be bylaws or whatever, that will help deal with the board's goal... board's goal of trying to deal with the aesthetics of the business and commercial zones in town. And to that light, you probably recall, I sent you an email a week and a half ago regarding the recommendation to try to set up just a small steering committee. Some of you have responded to that with some names in the business community you think will be helpful. So if you could revisit that, because it looks like now that the contract's executed, we can start to move forward, so. That's, unless you ask more, that's what I have.
Tom?
I'm assuming, Rick, you don't anticipate getting any of these issues with the park and rec resolved?
Well, right now, I'm sorry, when you say resolved, the, obviously, there's a season coming that's upon us and we have to move forward. And the last couple of years, as you know, the school superintendent, I mean, the school athletic director has been utilized to assist he, the Recreation Commission in running the programs. This year, he's, he and I have had some discussions and he's, he's willing to do that again and somewhat more of an expanded role for this season than he's had in the past, while we have the chance to contemplate, you know, what the longer-term outlook would look like for, for staffing for recreation. One of the things that is, that's helpful is that, in my meetings with the Recreation Committee, is that there's no question that the best role, that the, the park maintenance and a piece of this is best left to the Highway Department slash, hopefully, a future DPW. So solidifying those roles in the future is, is obviously going to be a little bit of an issue, but trying to buy a little bit of time is, is helpful. And Mr. Serino is, is pleased to continue in his role for another year and to give us time to do that.
I guess, I, just looking at, maybe I missed, misread, but we've got no problems with field maintenance for the spring and the way I understand it is, we're not collecting field maintenance fees anymore?
Well, that's an issue that the, the board has considered twice. I know I met with them last week and unfortunately, I was not available when they took a vote to that effect. They are meeting again March 27, I believe that's Thursday night, and I intend to be there for that meeting. There was some question about some of the monies that were still available on the revolving fund, some question about, you know, who has the authority to spend that. So my commitment to them was to get them some good, accurate financial information so that they can make a decision. I know some of the, I've had some calls from some of the leadership of some of the leagues who are concerned about a fee going away, because they know how important that has been in the last several years to maintaining those fields, so. And those people, I think some of those, those constituents haven't been heard and that's my understanding at least. So I think the, I think the meeting this week will be helpful in trying to address that issue, at least for the coming season.
Okay, thank you.
Just, Rick, one question. On the pensions last year, we had a substantial increase in pensions last year.
Yes.
And I, I don't know, but I thought the stock market did exceedingly well this year. And I'm a little bit taken back that we have another $100,000 increase. At one point, we had talked about, I think, a Mr. Farmer or something to come in here. I mean, I have a genuine concern about what happens with some of these things and getting, you know, it just seems like if we could plan a little bit better, I don't, I don't know. Is there any particular reason why? I think the market averaged somewhere around 30% last year, if I'm not correct.
I.
And now, you would think that it would either stay even, and I understand we're trying to reach a goal. I understand we're trying to reach a goal, which is, what, 2035, I think, if I'm not correct, but.
Two. It was 2028, I think that was expanded.
Yeah, and then, and then because, in my humble opinion, the, what they have on the table is unattainable. So we'll just kick the can down the road again. And so, I mean, that's my opinion.
And I think a lot of that was based upon, as you point out, the, the history and the, the performance of the markets.
Correct.
Correct, right.
We're basing their funds on eight and a half percent return is a little bit, I know that's what the market average is, but, I don't know.
I will, we will ask Mr. Farmer to provide us with some presentation, or I don't know if you prefer that he.
And that's up to the board.
He with the board, I don't know if you want to go that far, or I can ask for some, as, as good a presentation as I can get and we can see.
If you want to try that, I mean, it's up to the members of the board, that's fine by me. I'm just a little bit taken back that it was another, you know, we're struggling to get some monies to do other things and all of a sudden, we get another $100,000, so.
I know last year, they had, there had been a substantial projected increase, and of course, substantial is a, I guess, subjective these days. And in, and rather than hit, there was some outcry among the county, throughout the towns in the county that participate in that system, and they essentially agreed to a, a five-year phase in to deal with some of the losses that they've experienced. So they were projecting approximately, for the town of Abington, it would be about $170,000 to $180,000 per year for the next five years. But once again, that's a projection based upon, you know, a market at the time, so.
That's what I'm saying. I understand the market at that time was, was down, was down for all of us.
It's a huge financial factor.
Yeah, but just, it just took a nice run. You would think it would reflect somehow in their calculations, but anyways.
Can I ask a question?
No.
Thanks. And it's been the past practice of the board, maybe I'm getting this wrong, but a portion of the free cash, a certain percentage was going to stabilization. And I thought, didn't we adopt a policy where another percentage of it was going for the?
Correct, right.
Now, is that still in effect or is that, is that a farm meeting vote or how is it, did we do it last fall or?
Yes, well, yeah, we did a modified application last year. We didn't put a portion of free cash because we had a balance in our health insurance account that we transferred, which would have exceeded the percentage that would have come out of the free cash. So that was put into the OPEB trust fund in lieu of a free cash. But it was essentially, in principle, it was the, the policy of the board was, was implemented. There was, it just made more sense that way because of some of the other needs, capital needs of the town that were funded through free cash.
Okay, Tom, did you have a question?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, any further question? If not, public comment?
Okay. Some public comment.
You do.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, I don't have to stop. Mr. Burbine? Just going back to what we just discussed on the, the planning of the, of the laying out of the roads, I just want to make everybody aware that one of the other problems I have with the whole procedure is the fact that, and this goes back to, I know, people don't like to hear it, but goes back to special municipal employee status, and the fact that the developer is represented by the town moderator. To me, that just smacks right in the face of what town government is supposed to be all about. And I, I just think it's, the reason we implemented the policy for special municipal employee status is just for exactly reasons just like that. And I would, I just needed to say that and get that off my chest because it was, it bothers me. It bothers me that the town moderator is representing people in front of boards, committees, and now probably in front of town meeting because he's representing the developer and ultimately, town meeting has to approve the laying out of the roads. And I just think the conflict is so apparent and just, I had to say it, so that's, makes me feel better that I did.
Okay, Mr. Burbine, any other public comment? Sir? Yes. Could you please take the microphone?
My name's Kevin Worley, and I'm representing Mary Alion.
Kevin, will you just, yes, please, if you don't mind.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name's Kevin Worley, I'm representing Mary Alion, who is a property owner of two Collin Tony Way. Unfortunately, she's working tonight and she had a specific list of questions.
Sure.
But as opposed to going through them, if it was possible, if I could just submit them in writing?
Absolutely.
And she could have them addressed on her behalf?
Yes, definitely. I don't, Kevin, I don't know if maybe the questions for the planning board are us, but whatever, by all means, yes, to answer your question, that's very possible.
Most of it deals with, that property of Collin Tony Way backs up to the backside of the Southfield development.
Okay.
And as such, in previous years, it's been referred to as a paper street. Both sides of Ms. Alion's property are bounded by a paper street. One that comes in off the Savine roadside in Pine Street and the other, which is now Collin Tony Way, but there's an extension that goes into a gate that people use for recreational purposes. And one of the questions that Ms. Alion has deals with who's going to maintain that and what about public safety issues? There's a large group of people that go in there to go bow and arrow hunting. There's a large group of people that go in there with ATVs and rip up, for lack of a better term, the fine landscaping work that the builder or the developer, Mr. LaPointe, has done in that area. So the concern is, as this keeps going on, is it possible that there could be a streetlight that could be put in that area? Would that be a conversation that you might have to reach out and have a discussion with National Grid about? Then the other question was, is it possible that it could be no trespassing signs put up? But I'm not sure how that would work. And then one of the last items that she had asked about was also, because that had primarily been a area where there had been recreational, as I mentioned earlier, ATVs and off-road vehicles, people tend to come down that corner at a rather quick pace because it's a cut-through from Rockland on the backside of the base.
Spur Street you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And one of the issues that she has addressed, was concerned about, would like to know how it could be addressed, is the traffic pattern and the speed. As I explained to Ms. Alion, it'd be rather difficult to ask the town to do a traffic study for that area because there's really nothing that would contribute to the likelihood of that being a successful traffic study. Suggestion would be maybe police spinning by once in a while. But again, as I said to her, it's kind of off the beaten path, so it'd be difficult to ask.
It is, it is.
But I just wanted to get those on, on the record and I appreciate the time.
Not a problem, I appreciate you coming forward. Do you live in the area, Kevin?
Actually, I'm a carpet bagger.
No, that's fine. That's, it's nice of you to come and bring that forward.
Mr. Donovan, I've met before because I have good friends with the former state senator. So I'm a carpet bagger, I've been down here many times, but former Senator Mike Morrissey.
Oh, sure.
And I've done a lot of constituent work for him down here. So it was an easy ask. I was probably one of the few people from Quincy who actually knows where the Abington Town Hall is. Thank you for your patience.
If you would give that to the town manager, I don't know where we'd go with some of those issues, but we'll certainly do our best.
I agree as well.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Kevin. And did members of the board have any questions? No? Okay, any further public comment? If not, motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of strategies pertaining to collective bargaining with the clerical union, managers' association, and police union and not to reconvene to open session.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Burbine.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donovan. Tom?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.